David Farnsworth, I've lived in the county thirty years and Monmouth is my local town. I convene a community group in Monmouth called Monmouth 2020 Vision.
I'm Anna Pace, I'm a resident of Abigavenny and I am observing.
I'm Philip Boyer and I'm here today representing the people who started the online petition of Save Our Seats concerning St John's Square and also representing the management of the King's Arms which is in St John's Square in Abigavenny.
Thank you very much. Now, could you raise your hand if you wish to address the meeting so that I can work out how many minutes...so one, two, three, four? So, I think if you could speak for no longer than five minutes and if we could start the public open forum once I've just asked for apologies for absence this morning.
Thank you Chair, we've received apologies this morning from County Councilor Anne Webb.
And also councillor Fekins who's...yeah. Are there any declarations of interest from members? We'll take them as and when. So if I could please invite Mr Philip Boyer to address the meeting.
Thank you very much Chair and thank you for this opportunity to address the committee and thank you also for the consultation meeting which you held in Abigavenny a short time ago which I think was very useful for all concerned. As I said, I'm here today representing first of all the people who started the online petition called Save Our Seats and secondly the management of the King's Arms Hotel which is very much affected by these proposals. Let me say that since that meeting in Abigavenny, we are very pleased to note that the proposal is now made to drop all the charges involved with this first proposal and we would certainly support that and hope that that goes through. But in many respects, the rest of the document which we have some problems with remains as it was. So we welcome the changes which have been made but we also would like to make some points on the rest of the document. If you look at the document which was written for this meeting under paragraph 3.4, it mentions the option that was put up that there should be no change to the situation. Now, as I think I was the one probably most guilty of putting forward that argument, I feel bound to defend it just a little bit. For those who don't know Abigavenny, St John's Square is a very sizable square in the middle of the town. It has a couple of businesses there, one which is Cafe One Bar which my colleague here to my left owns and works and represents today and the King's Arms and they have tables outside their businesses which people use to sit and eat and drink and talk or whatever they just happen to want to do. On Thursday last week actually I was sitting there watching my grandson's kick a football around because it was his twelfth birthday. So people use it as a centre and when we have great events like the Ashtedford, that place is packed with hundreds of people. When we have the sunshine like we've had in recent weeks, that place is packed with hundreds of people doing all sorts of things that you can do in a large square like that. And our real desire is that that continues as it is. We think it's an enormous asset for the town, it's a great advertisement for the town. You meet people from all over the world. I was talking to somebody from the United States, from Australia last week who were there on holiday and they go away saying what a great place Abigavenny is. So that's basically what we want to keep and what we would like to see expand. And that's why I was saying at the last meeting, as far as I know, there've been no complaints from anybody about the situation in St John's Square. There's quite ample room between tables and walls and roads and everything to let everybody through whether you're in a...three kids in a triplicate pushchair or whether you're on a mobility scooter. There's plenty of room for people to get through. There was also some doubt about it because there's traffic there but it's a shared space and frankly we've had no incident because traffic knows that it's a shared space. People slow down and if you really want to stop them coming in, there are other ways of doing that rather than taking away the pleasure of people. We might take away some of the pleasure of the motorists which could solve that problem. It's really a problem. And we've asked for anybody who can give us complaints about it and we haven't seen any. So my message at the last meeting was, something which we always used in my professional life because we quite often messed up, was if it's not broken, don't try to mend it. And it was the trying to mend it which has created problems for people. Now, part of the argument put forward by the officials of this committee against that was the legal situation and who is legally responsible for accidents should they occur? Although it's accepted that accidents are rare, actually they're not rare, they're non-existent up to now though we can see that they might in some circumstance happen. And so it's only a note on the way, I don't want to make a big issue of it. But having said that that's the reason for it, I found very strange then in paragraph 3.4 that after saying the reason is something to do with the law, the sentence actually ends by saying inquiries to date have not offered a clear opinion on this. I really would have thought if you're basing a policy on law, you should have a clear opinion about it. But that's by the by. Now onto my main plea today. As it stands, it seems that the document means that for anybody who wants over eighteen square metres of space, some special kind of application still has to be made. And it's written in the document that that could also include the local member of the council I assume and the cabinet member and I don't know who else, the officer in charge of that particular point. The point I would like to make is that eighteen square metres is a very arbitrary number in terms of St John's Square. What is there already is far more than eighteen square metres and we don't want to lose any of it. And that was an assurance given at the last meeting that there was no intention of actually reducing the number of tables and we'd hoped that you'd find a way of making sure that that happens. But the eighteen, by the way, I do love eighteen. I'm old enough to remember, you know, when we had twelve pennies to shilling and so I'm glad to see that when you look at the evidence, all the other town councils used ten and twenty and thirty and Monmouth proposed six and twelve and eighteen. So it's nice to see bringing back base twelve for mathematics for people. But having said that, it's very arbitrary and if you want more than that, which the King's Arms will, then you have to go through another application procedure.
You've got one minute left, Mr Boyer.
Okay, what we would like to see is that what they have now, they can keep and that there's not a complicated system for them to have to apply every year and perhaps when the offices change, they will change their minds about it as well. That's what we want to see. It's a great asset for the town. We would love to see much more going on, not less. So I make the plea to you, please make sure that we keep what we've got. After that, we will see what happens. But hopefully we can be more positive and not just try and stop things happening, but try and make things happen in Abigavenny. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Boyer, for your valued contribution. And if I can now ask, was it Mel? Who was the next person who wanted to speak along? Mr Farnsworth. Yes, if you'd like to speak now for no longer than five minutes, please, Mr Farnsworth.
Thank you Chair. By the way, in addition to being a convener of the community group in Monmouth, I have a professional background in the development and management of towns and cities across the UK and Europe. I want to make just two brief points that seem to me to arise from this whole situation around street furniture and the lessons that you as a scrutiny committee might draw from it. The first lesson seems to me to be about vision or rather a lack of it. The council policy adopted in 2016 calls for...calls this issue the regulation of obstructions in the highway. Of course, streets need to be safe and easy environments for everyone, disabled or abled. But streets are far more than just highway law. We all know that high streets are struggling economically. Hundreds of towns across the UK and Europe are now realising that town centres have to be places to enjoy and to be in as well as places to buy from. Why on earth would this council want to penalise traders financially for adding to the attraction of town centres? I understand that the council has now recognised this. You need to become a creator of places, not just an administrator of regulations. In a nutshell, you need a vision for each town in the county. The second lesson seems to me to be about consultation or rather the lack of it. The council needs to seriously rethink its approach to community participation. You may remember, Chair, that I made the same plea to this committee over a year ago when you were looking at the review of community engagement. Please stop producing a hundred page or more policy reports written in obscure language and expect the community to understand them even if we had the time to read them. Community participation should be all about real projects that everyone can relate to. But how do we even find out about the projects that you are doing or plan to do? For example, I put a search into your website yesterday for street furniture and I got a page, community recycling centres. So it's very difficult to find out what you're up to. The community is full of information, ideas and solutions. You need to come out of the county hall big policy bubble and enable the community to participate from the very start of each project, not at the end when you've decided everything and when things get to a crisis point like today. I understand that Democratic Services Committee is now looking at how the council can better engage with residents. We would all save a great deal of time, aggravation and money. That is our money, by the way, if you did. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Farnsworth. You've made some very important points and I did exactly the same search as you yesterday and I must admit I came up with exactly the same thing. So I think there is a very important point there made about our website. Can I just ask, was it Anna Pace? Did you want to speak? Was it Anna? Or have I gone the wrong way? No, you didn't want...all right, sorry. Lucy, no, I thought that lady wanted to speak. Right, to Mr Farnsworth's left, if you...Anthea, if you'd like to speak and address the committee, please.
Anthea Dewhurst, thank you, from Monmouth. I've been doing quite a lot of research and this problem and its solutions have been going on since fourteen nineteen, that was in Book of Common Law in London, where at no stall shall project out from the house beyond the breadth of two feet and a half. So that would please you. And the same be movable and flexible for the convenience of the neighbours. So the measurements are almost identical and the problems are amazingly similar and solvable as far as I can see. Nevertheless, each town is different. Monmouth is different from Abigavenny and we can each make our own solutions, I think. There is room at the moment when people, shopkeepers, comply with the measurements that are given at the moment, the present state. When they comply with the reasonable rules, there is room for both visually impaired and mobility scooters. I've been experiencing that recently myself. But accidents do happen. They may not in Abigavenny but they do in Monmouth. There are partially sighted people who have tripped and injured themselves on A-boards and things that are put randomly. Not the things that are complying with the distance from the shop. You know, there are quite reasonable rules that can be stuck to and usually are. And I hope we can make something reasonable and perhaps even positive out of a quite silly situation. Can we improve rather than become rigid in the face of challenges? One idea I would put forward is that once these dimensions of stalls and cafe furniture are agreed for each town, can the access be self-monitored? Can the situation be self-monitored so that it doesn't cost the county council anything? This may be too optimistic but I would have thought certainly in Monmouth, this could be made up of a team involving, number one, the energy of the most local protesters and supporters of small visitors. There was a really serious protest and petition. If some of those people could put themselves forward and be part of this team. Secondly, representatives of the visually impaired and possibly a mobility impaired group. And thirdly, I think some of the town councillors in Monmouth would be willing to be part of a team who would just keep a regular...just a background piece of monitoring, you know, without needing to cause any big deal. I've got other more positive ideas about what you could do instead of A-boards but I won't go into those now. I think Church Street itself could be full of character if the signs were hung from overhead. It could be famous for its hanging signs. I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthea, for your valuable contribution. And I know that Roger and I did walk down that street last week and we commented, you know, I commented on how beautiful and pretty and certainly there weren't any problems with anything last week when we walked through. So thank you. If I can next call on...was it Mr Cole? No? Lucy. Lucy Howell, thank you very much Lucy, if you'd like to address the committee.
Good morning. My name is Lucy Howell and I'm representing Abigavenny Business Community. We have just over, sorry, just under a hundred and fifty members, the majority of which are independent traders within the town of Abigavenny. The recently suspended A-Board policy affects not just one business but a considerable number of businesses within the town. Every one of these businesses contributes to the community of Abigavenny through employment and the local economy. The number of empty premises in Abigavenny is below the national average and there's an above-average number of independent businesses within the town. However, we shouldn't be complacent with these facts. On our doorstep, we've got Crick Howell who are seeing a decrease in footfall, us who sadly have just been told that Barclays and their post office will be closing their doors in the very near future. And then over the border you've got Bath who've got as many as forty-two empty shops. Abigavenny's success is down to the hard work of the independents who fight every day to keep their businesses alive. With the ever-growing presence of the internet, business rate increases, car parking charges and supermarkets who seem to sell everything including the kitchen sink, it all adds to the battle. The introduction of the A-Board policy is just another knock. Shopping habits are changing across the land and we in Abigavenny are already seeing this. The big household shop tends to be done at the supermarket or on a Sunday when there are no parking charges payable. The more luxury, the more specific shop is becoming a day out with maybe a bit of lunch or afternoon tea. It's a social event to meet up with friends and family and mooch around the shops. And this is why the number of places we have to eat and drink throughout the town are many and they all add to the experience, not to mention bringing people to our town. The A-Boards, planters, tables and chairs you see around Abigavenny add to this experience as well as adding vibrancy. It helps make us different from the clone towns we see throughout the country. This variety and above-average independent businesses is what our visitors come to Abigavenny for. Take this away and you will kill what is working. As well as adding vibrancy to our town, the A-Boards, planters, tables and chairs gives the independents a chance to ply their wares in a subtle and charming manner suited to our town. As we continue to promote festivals throughout the year, it is ironic, they're allowed to display their wares through the town contradicting what the policy allows the independents to do. Finally, fairness. Abigavenny is a town spread over half a mile with three squares and many other areas that would benefit from the ability to place tables and chairs on the highway. Whatever policy is put into place, we must make sure it is fair for all. We understand there's a legal obligation to implement a policy and if it isn't done so, then the liability comes back on to the MCC which in effect has an impact on the public purse. So we accept there will be some form of licence. But there's no reason why we cannot work with these wonderful characteristic features that make Abigavenny the town it is. Europe does it beautifully. You only need to look at Las Ramblas in Barcelona or the independent shopping centres throughout the UK who endorse their tenants peddling their wares outside the premises. We too can manage it as we have been doing so prior to the introduction of the A-Board policy. So in conclusion, and what we would consider to be a fair compromise for all, we feel that all A-Boards, planters and tables should be licensed but there should be no charges across the board. Any trader wishing to display A-Boards, planters or tables should have a liability cover of no less than five million. Anything over five million has a further financial impact on our traders. We already have some traders who are unable to take out an A-Board because their liability insurance has been increased in cost by up to a hundred and fifty pounds in some instances. Any trader wishing to display an A-Board, plant a table or chair must ensure that it does conform with the points A to G that were listed on the A-Board policy, which is basically...
Lucy, you have one minute left, thank you.
Right, thank you. Which basically has health and safety issues. A licence, there would obviously need to be an application form that the MCC would need to actually draw up but that can easily be policed with the MCC issuing a licence form that is then drafted, then, sorry, blah blah. That one minute pushed me, sorry. Basically policing of it can be done by the actual person wishing to place an A-Board outside their premises. It's the case of them just filling out the form, submitting their liability insurance and a licence being reverted back to them that they can display in their premises. We also look to having the A-Board policy not revisited for seven years, subject to there being no legal reason why you wouldn't need to do so. And then finally, eighteen square metres. Traders requiring areas larger than eighteen square metres would be able to do so, subject to a satisfactory risk assessment being put into place. And finally, I'd just like to say thank you for your time and ask that we remember our goal is to make Abigavenny a success and we can do this by working together and not against each other. That's me, sorry for the...
Thank you. Thank you. If you could turn your microphone off and thank you very much indeed for the very valid and valuable points that you made and for all the work you do for the Abigavenny Business Community. And now if I could ask Mr Powell from Abigavenny to speak next.
Thank you very much. Just a quick point, we...there's a club that meets in Abigavenny called the Mobility Club. I couldn't attend the meeting but I asked the lady called Benita Kelly, who I think might be the chairperson, was there any problems within the town regarding obstructions of A-Boards, furniture and whatnot? And they brought it up in their meeting last week and only one issue in the whole town that they had. And I did ask them to email you, Jane, I'm not sure, have they emailed you? They have, sorry. Sorry, I did ask them to forward an email to you regarding their issues, oh, one issue, and just for them to like point out that they're quite happy as the town stands.
I don't recall that email but I don't think I've received that email but if you could ask them to forward that email, that'd be very helpful.
I will do and thank you very much.
Thank you for your contribution, Mr Powell. And if I could now ask our next speaker, have we, anybody else would like to speak that hasn't already spoken? Okay. Can I just at this point say that I have received at the last meeting a number of representations from Abigavenny Business Organisation. I've also received a petition last week from Save Church Street in Monmouth and I received that petition from councillor Fekins last Thursday. And also I have received a number of emails and all these have been carefully noted. So I think I would like to thank all of those of you that have spoken this morning and for coming along because really, without the community having their contribution, you know, we really have got to think what are we trying to achieve? And I think Mr Farnsworth made some very important points as you all did. And now we're going to throw the debate open to the councillors after we've listened to Mr Hoggins who is going to discuss the policy with us. Mr Hoggins, if you'd like to present the policy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To open this up, I won't take too long but I'll just give a little bit of brief background to the position which we now found ourselves in. Select Committee has considered their policy on two occasions previously, I believe, in 2016 and 2017. And in, it was Cabinet in January eighteen, which decided to withdraw any A-Board charge and to have the charge for any displays or coffee tables or chairs. But for the permit scheme to remain in place and for officers to work with individual businesses to see what could be achieved. So this scheme was rolled out following that approval by Cabinet. Scheme was rolled out in the south of the county to start off with. There was about eighty or ninety businesses which were in the process or had been signed up predominantly for A-Boards. But they, in the south of the county, we made that progress. There was then, however, a campaign and the first at officer level we heard of was from Abigavenny and in particular in relation to having the opportunity to have areas larger than eighteen square metres. That was the first part of the campaign which we heard. There was also a campaign in Monmouth that was much broader, but particularly...
If I may, Chair, I'm sorry Roger to interrupt you. I don't think you made it clear enough at the beginning that we, the select committees did meet and particularly on the last occasion, we strongly recommended that you didn't go forward with charges, which was different to what the Cabinet then decided. Can we just make that point of clarification, please? Thanks.
Thank you councillor Jones. I think we'll let Mr Hoggins complete his presentation and then I will ask the councillor Jones, the portfolio holder, just really to explain to everybody why that decision was made. But if you'd like to carry on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. So we then had a campaign for Monmouth which was more around the impact of the charges, not exclusive and I'm generalising to a degree because in these types of campaigns, the debates can be very wide and varied. So, but picking up from...and we also had various petitions, I believe there was two online petitions with thousands of votes on them and you, Madam Chairman, have also got signed petitions as well in relation to various aspects. One I recall is highlighted Save Our Seats which I believe is aimed at St John's Square in Abigavenny and there's another one called Save Church Street. So there are written petitions, signed petitions along those bases. There may be others and my apologies to those which I haven't highlighted but that is, that is the background to what happened. In light of the feedback in the campaign, introduction of charges was suspended and we then undertook some public meetings in Abigavenny and in Monmouth to gain further feedback about... to gain further feedback about what the main issues were surrounding the scheme. And I've reflected in the report on probably three main themes. That being, one, whether there should be charges for displays or coffee tables or benches at all. Don't forget, A-Board charges didn't exist, they weren't in the policy anyway. Should we allow larger areas? And last but not least, should there be a scheme at all? And should we rely upon some, a common sense approach towards managing this matter? I can't call it a policy because we wouldn't have a policy, so I'm struggling with it a little bit. So, given the feedback from that, the feeling from members, which officers picked up more generally, the feeling from the business community, we've rolled that up into the report which you see in front of you. And given the feedback, officers will make a recommendation, are making a recommendation to select that the charges for the displays, coffee tables, A-Boards, would that be withdrawn? However, that the policing or any transgression of that permit policy arrangement that I find ultimately would be incurred. And before I start another campaign for that, there would be two or three, this wouldn't happen overnight. There would be consultation with that business to say, you're not complying with your licence, do you want to look at it again? Can we work with you again? So you go through a process, I believe there's two or three letters in that before eventually we got down to enforcement. But ultimately, I would suggest to members that we do need some form of enforcement policy in the event of non-compliance, if indeed you stick with a permit scheme. Larger areas, there has been members, member support for that. But what I recommend in, or what we're recommending as officers, in the event of an area larger than 18 square metres, that that be agreed with senior officer of highways, which would be Steve or myself, plus the cabinet member, plus the local member. The reason I do that, up to 18 square metres, the policy allows the highways inspector or whoever the officer is going to the business to agree the extent. Over and above that is starting to get larger. I haven't put a limit on it, it becomes open-ended. So I would suggest that that has to be done with a senior officer and with the cabinet member and the local member to ensure that there is broader agreement that that be allowed. That doesn't mean it precludes it from happening, but it does put a further check on it because the area is no larger than the 18 square metres. Finally, down to the no scheme at all and revert to, or not revert to, but use a common sense approach. There was also talk of reverting to the existing scheme. That I would suggest isn't to the benefit of anybody because the previous scheme, which we simply weren't policing, only allowed an A-Board outside your property and I believe is up to 1.2 metres away from your property. A-Board or display. Now, in the event of us reverting to that, quite frankly, that cleared virtually all of our displays and tables and chairs. Nobody wants to achieve that, we're not looking to do that. So officers would not recommend that you revert to the old scheme. The concept, I'd have to say, of common sense by way of agreement, you know, it's got something to commend it because it means officers don't have to go out there and agree permits with each business. But what do we rely on then? Because, I think I may have used the term, common sense isn't uniformly distributed amongst the population. So what might appear common sense to one might not to the other. And you end up then in a position where standoff, A-Board wars, whatever. I don't know what it quite, it would look like. So we were suggesting that you retain the permit. There isn't a cost to it, but it does mean that that business is permitted to do what it wishes to do and the authority has said, that's okay. So it gives them some comfort that the scheme is supported. Gives the highway authority the opportunity to ensure it maintains that safe route. And we shouldn't forget that as Monmouthshire County Council, the highway authority, we have a responsibility to maintain a safe route. That, Madam Chairman, is the background to the recommendations which have been put before you. I, if I may, I've listened to the feedback from members of the public. There's a couple of things I would pick up on if that's okay. The issue about more than 18 square metres, and I did whisper to Steve, because where did the 18 square metres come from? And it is from other authorities. We've seen other schemes where the 18 square metres does appear. Now, in imperial many, if we're going back to pensions and pence, in my rationale, it's 10 foot by 20 foot. And that's how I look at it in my head. So, but it's 18 square metres, that's where that is, the policy is. If indeed you choose to allow greater than that, then that will in fact become a little bit academic. Other than up to 18 square metres, it will be the officer who visits that will agree it. Over 18 square metres, that officer's going to say, yeah, I see your application, see what you want. I've got to go back to my senior officer just to check it off. The comment about law and no clear opinion. If law was clear, you wouldn't want lawyers. But insurance, it was actually the insurance which we were struggling with. And they wouldn't give us a clearer opinion on that. Other than the industry standard in terms of displaying anything in the public highway is a minimum of £5 million public liability insurance. And that's where that aspect comes from. Picking up on the issue of consultation. We've been through two sessions previously of consultation. The last one we did was the third. And that was with town councils, with chambers of commerce and with general public questionnaires. We also looked at what other authorities were doing. And we did that on two previous occasions because this policy has been to select on two occasions before. And on both occasions, we've been asked to review it. So this was the third. I do, however, take the point about how do we consult effectively? I went, attended the meeting at Monmouth and we consulted through the chamber there. But many, many businesses said, well, we're not in, we're not in the chamber of commerce. So how do we do that? So there is a piece of work to be done around how we, how we carry that out in the future. In relation to the website, again, that's a point which I have heard. I'm searching on street furniture, probably bring up, I don't know quite what it did bring up, but I would hope that we brought up lamp posts and benches and bins. But because this is actually a policy around obstructions in the highway. So you may have had more luck with that search, I don't know. Having said that, I'm probably a hostage to fortune now when something else would pop up. But that's what the policy was actually named. There have been, in relation to whether or not there have been complaints, there have been complaints. We have had records of complaints from members of the public about that. And we were lobbied quite actively by various groups about ensuring that we maintain a safe route in the highway for the general public and in particular for those with wheelchairs or baggies or the visually impaired. And we did, we were lobbied about that and we have a responsibility to ensure that we maintain that as the highway authority. But the permit, if indeed you do adopt the permit or recommend that Cabinet adopt the permit, allows us to work with individual businesses to create that. And that's the idea behind it. The, although it's not mentioned in the report, the idea of a risk assessment by businesses for over 18 square metres has got a lot of merit in it, I would have to say. And that places some emphasis back to that business. It doesn't preclude it, but it does show that that business has actively considered how it's going to manage its situation should the area be larger than the 18 square metres. Even less than that, they should be doing that. But there is much to commend that. That, Madam Chairman, is probably enough from me, I would suggest.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, Roger, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. Councillor Jones raised an important point. Before we throw the debate open, I would just like to take members back to our meeting last September. And just to sum up that meeting, members felt that the charges were too high. And although they agreed that having a policy in place was essential, the financial pressure of the charges on local businesses would be too great. A member commented that there must be a system in place so that we can inspect and regulate items placed on the highway. The committee's conclusion was that members did not want the current permit scheme removed as maintaining and controlling items placed on the highway was essential to provide a safe route. Upon taking a vote, the majority of the committee asked that the recommendation of no charge was taken to Cabinet. So I would now like to throw the debate open, first of all, to members of this committee. So I think councillor Harris, would you like to start with your question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was an interesting point that you just brought out there. I wasn't a member of this committee last September. And the important thing is that the committee is an all-party committee. And a couple of other points. The Cabinet is obviously not an all-party cabinet. And there was a recommendation from this committee that Cabinet didn't impose charges. So we start from, we start from there. And also, and I'm aware, you said, let's not get political. But I have to remind people, if they were watching on Cabinet, on council on Thursday, that the deputy leader stood up and gave a report which was unanswerable by anyone else, stating basically that, you know, it was down to the Welsh government. Well, let's get that out of the way now. What I would say is, the Welsh, sorry, the cafe culture is absolutely fantastic and needs to be nurtured. But at the same time, we need to make sure that the public are protected. So as far as I'm concerned, we need to make sure that businesses have got the relevant amount of insurance. If they haven't, then unfortunately, I can't be one that says, well, don't worry about it. They have to be relatively insured. Also, there needs to be fairness. Now, each town is different and we've got St John's Square in Abigavenny. But if you think about it, it would be totally unfair, say, for the King's Arms to totally take over the square and Neville Street, et cetera. And I'm sure that won't happen, but we need to have some sort of limitations in place so that doesn't happen. And basically, what we need to do, as far as I can see in each town, is have representatives of, say, this committee, representatives of the business community, just getting together and talking about what they would like to see. And as I stated, I'm in favour of the cafe culture. It's probably going to bring in more money into the area than it's going to cost the authority. And if we do go free, it will cost the authority, but some things maybe are worth paying for. So I think each town could have a relevant representation with officers of this council, members of this council and the business community to knock the edges off and make sure we get to a fair situation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Harris. Can I invite Roger to come back on those points made around insurance? And that was primarily the point you made, wasn't it councillor Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. As I say, the feedback we've had from our insurers or our underwriters at least, is that you need a minimum of £5 million public liability or a business needs a million, minimum of £5 million public liability should they wish to display something or place something in the public highway. We understand this will have an impact upon some businesses, not all, but it may do where their public liability insurance is less than that. However, for us not to do that may mean that we'd be underwriting any costs which should be incurred in the event of an accident happening. So we would recommend that it remains at five million. I've adequately answered it.
Are you happy with that response councillor Harris?
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's absolutely essential, as I say, if a business can't afford the five million, then unfortunately, they won't be able to participate in the scheme. It's essential that they know that and we know that. After all, if you've got home insurance, there's a couple of million built into everyone's home insurance in case somebody falls down the stairs and claims.
Thank you councillor Harris. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to just agree with my colleague. I do, I believe too, that the insurance, business by business, is very important. We can't pick up the bill there. I do believe we should retain a permit, have some sort of, have some sort of regulation in place. But as I strongly pointed out last September, I do agree, I do think there should have been no charges at all. And I'm still of that opinion, as is most of our committee, I know. I think in a county where we're heavily reliant on tourism and bringing people into our small towns, I think it's absolutely vital we do everything possible to support our small businesses. I will fight tooth and, I along with, sure with all my colleagues cross-party, will fight tooth and nail to make sure our towns are revitalised. And rather than punishing small businesses, we do everything we can to support them. And I believe that as a committee, we recognised that last September and that we really don't need to be putting extra charges on these businesses when they're struggling enough already. Yeah, I think that, I think that going forward, I think that if you do want more squareage, I know my colleagues are going to go on to it in more detail now, so I don't want to say too much. But I do believe that everything has to be done on an individual basis. One size does not fit all. I think we will recognise that. Every business is different, every town is different. So I think as long as we put that at the heart of our recommendations, then we'll be successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Jones. Could I just bring in the portfolio holder councillor Jones at this point to just explain why it was decided by Cabinet to implement the charges?
Thank you, Chair. Well, it's a fact of life that our officer base now is a lot thinner than it was. We've got less troops on the ground. So to look after something like the regulation of this policy probably involves getting something refreshing. And, you know, even if we collected all the money we should have collected if the scheme had gone ahead, it still would only have been about £5,000, which, you know, you're probably aware, won't pay for a member of staff. But anyway, it was on the basis really- But anyway, it was on the basis, really, that there was a cost to doing this. Having said that, when we, you know, heard all the recriminations and arguments about it, and I attended meetings with Roger, we felt it was only sensible to withdraw the charges at that stage. And, you know, that's what we decided to do, and that's where we are at this moment.
Thank you, councillor Jones. And I know the other councillor Jones, you spoke very strongly in that September meeting about supporting businesses as you have done today, so did you want to make any further comment?
I just wanted to say to Brian that we do understand that, obviously, regulating this and sort of keeping on track of what people are actually doing is hard and it costs money. We do understand that, and the money's got to come from somewhere and there's going to be a shortfall. But at the end of the day, I think that we do need to support our small businesses, and that is the most important thing, and that's the hit we're just going to have to take and find somehow.
As somebody who runs a small business themselves, I fully understand what the pressures are. I've got them like everybody else has got them. Thank you.
Councillor Roden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I must say that Lucy Howell impressed me in a statement regarding the issues faced by traders, and I think that as a council, we need to engage with the retailers and jointly find solutions to the issues that they face. It's quite important. In terms of the questions too, basically, A-boards and other furniture, how do you actually decide what's reasonable when you're actually placing them in the, or agreeing placement in the street? And are the positions going to be fixed geographically in the street to allow the visually impaired to get used to where they are? And secondly, in terms of larger squares, larger interest in square metreage, is there a scheme whereby you can assess what other businesses in the area think of a giant expanding in an area and taking their business? You know, we have to have fairness for all, and I think that it's relevant to actually take into account, in terms of the King's Arms in Abigavenny, what other publicans feel in the area around that business. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roden. Would you like to come back, Mr Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. The idea of the second cheque then, as we've put in there, for the senior officer and for the local member and the Cabinet member, is to offer us an opportunity to look at an application in the round, really, because the point is well made. One business may choose to actively pursue a cafe culture and perhaps crowed out others. We have to be able to manage that, and I would urge members to appreciate that if indeed we use this permit scheme and we use this check-in system, that there may well still be businesses which are dissatisfied at the end of that, because we have got a responsibility to maintain a route. And by working with individual businesses, I do suspect there will be others who'll be watching what we're doing with individual businesses as well, because there is an impact upon others. You know, I have listened to a lot of debates in the last couple of weeks around this, and there's only a certain amount of money to go around if it goes to one place and it's not going to the other. And there is an aspect of us having to work, as I say, with the Cabinet member and the local member to see what may be fair and reasonable. You made the point about how, sorry, councillor Roden made the point about how will we practically manage it? Well, the permit, Steve will correct me where I'm wrong, but I believe the permit will have a plan, which shows where that A-board, where that coffee table, where that display, where that umbrella, where that clothes rail may be placed. The other thing it does is, unlike the existing policy, which says you can only place it outside your business, it allows businesses the flexibility to place them somewhere else. Because if your business is tucked down in a square, and you can put it outside it, nobody's going to see it. So we will be working with them to see where we can place them in a more prominent position to try and support their business. And we actually looked at some examples, Madam Chairman, it was in Church Street, but businesses off Church Street in Monmouth where we could perhaps do that. If I may, Madam Chairman, I think in a broader context, in terms of supporting businesses, we, the Authority may need to look at a broader policy around advertising and signing to try and promote some businesses more effectively than they are at the moment. This will allow us to do so much, but it may need more than that, I suspect, based upon the feedback I was hearing from, or we all heard, from various independents, particularly, sorry, various businesses, particularly the independents.
Thank you. Councillor Roden, did you want to come back on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one aspect, and that is the feasibility of hanging signs, as councillor Dewhurst mentioned. It may suit somewhere like Church Street in Monmouth. Is there a policy, or what's the position on having signs like that? Thank you.
As you've taken it out of the highway, it's not in my ballpark. I do suspect you might hit some planning issues, particularly if you put neon signs all over them as well. I, you know, I venture there with trepidation, but the point is, well, I think the point is made about trying to improve signage generally, and perhaps by doing so, add something to the vibrancy, and I'm struggling to describe it, but some sort of signage which allows that and allows to promote some businesses which are not necessarily in the beaten track. It's quite interesting to see some A-boards stuck outside the front door of some businesses, whereas others are placing them fifty metres away to try and bring people to them, and how do we get that to work in that context? So it's not necessarily exclusively a highway matter, but it's perhaps around more supporting businesses and enterprise and supporting businesses matter as well.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask councillor Easton and councillor Smith, who are members of the committee, to speak next, and then I'll throw it open to other members.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps this is going to be a trip down memory lane. I've been brought, I was born and brought up in Monmouthshire, so I know all these towns quite intimately. I was brought up in Usk particularly, and Usk hasn't changed much over the last seventy years, the lorries have got bigger, so Usk has got a particular problem which is, quite frankly, irresolvable at this moment in time. In terms of the other towns, I know Abigavenny well, because I spent a lot of time in Abigavenny. Some is pedestrianised, some is shared, some has got some traffic in them. So I think Abigavenny got a particular way of resolving some of those problems, particularly where it's a shared space or where they've actually got traffic. And I'm surprised that Chepstow haven't come here today, because they've been concerned with the problems in Chepstow. Chepstow's got a sort of bypass, but it still has a lot of traffic going through the main street, so there's a problem there of how you deal with street furniture. We haven't mentioned Raglan. Raglan's got a bypass, but that has a need for regulation of street furniture possibly, because there's a lot of parking there and it's quite a busy place. I come to, well, I know Monmouth as well, that's a wider town, and I believe each town has got, as councillor Jones said, a specific way of dealing with the problem. I'm living in Caldeghaut now. Caldeghaut is completely pedestrianised, and at the moment, we're trying to stop it being a shared space, because traffic tries to go on Caldeghaut pedestrianised area. But as I say, each town, each area, has got a specific way of solving them, and one of the members mentioned, or I think it was yourself, that a local member's get involved with the officers and deal with each town on its own. But you need a broad brush to cover the insurance. You need a general view on what will be a charge of a permit. I believe it should be a fixed charge for a permit if we do our permits, there is going to be time spent in dealing with that. I don't think it should be an open-ended permit, I think it should be a set figure, and it should last for all time. Then you come to the eighteen square metres. You've got all variations of eighteen square metres, you can have pi R, you can have pi D, you can have six by three, two by nine, eighteen by one, you can put a cricket pitch in front of some places. So to me, for example, in Caldeghaut, outside the cross-in, if you decide to have an eighteen metre-long by metre-wide footpath, you can have Benjall all the way alongside the pub. But I do think that should also be some sort of regulation. I don't believe eighteen by one would be practical and sensible. So as members, we've got to come up with a view today to support the businesses, which I believe we've got to support businesses, they're there, they're there for the future of the communities. And each of the towns, I believe, have got a Chamber of Commerce. Am I correct? I think most of the towns, except Caldeghaut, haven't got one. Sorry?
They do.
They do. I think that the Chamber of Commerce should take more interest in this as a matter, of course, whereby perhaps there could be block insurance for some businesses which can't afford to have five million pound insurance, that the Chamber of Commerce would take on a way forward for each town. Whether it's feasible, I don't know, it's just brainstorm as far as I'm concerned to move things forward. But where we are today, on a decision last week, was to revert to zero. I asked a one question, all those businesses in the south of the county who actually stumped up some money for the licences, will they be refunded? Because we're now creating a two-tier situation where some are not going to be charged, but some are already being charged, and there's going to be unfairness. I'll leave it like that for now, maybe there's another question as we develop.
Thank you very much, councillor Easton. So you've raised some valid points there. Can we first of all clarify the situation for those businesses that have already paid as we started in the south of the county?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three businesses which have paid. Yeah. Don't forget, the A-boards, there's no charge, there's a permit, but there is no charge now. That was never part of the scheme. Sorry, if I, through you, Madam Chairman, if I may, it's the same scheme. You agree, you get a little plan which shows your A-board can go by there, and that is the same as the scheme for a coffee table, or for a display, or for the rest of it. So you get a plan, which then allows that business to display that and say, Highway Authority says this is okay for me to do.
Can I ask you about planters, then? Your flowers?
I believe councillor Easton is picking up on a particular point in relation to Caldeghaut, and I'll pick that up with you separately, because it's a section fifty agreement which has been taken out, which needs a legal engrossment. So I have checked up on what's going on with that, but I'll pick that up with you separately, if I may. Section fifty, if applied in another town, would be in the same position, yes.
Explain section fifty.
I think we do need to be looking at the broad policy for the whole of Monmouthshire, and I think we'll have to take up individual cases of individual things at a later date. We've only got time today to discuss the policy as a whole, across the whole county.
I accept that, Chair, but it is a county-wide policy, section fifty.
Did you want to come back on that?
Yeah, just to confirm, a section fifty may be taken out by a business or by organisations, and there is a legal engrossment then to be created, and there's a charge associated with that. So it's a different process, but if you, we could pick up on that matter separately, if that's of interest. It's not impacting upon this as is, albeit I understand what you're on about, because there is an overlap in that matter. Can I just say, the, there's three businesses which have paid, they will be reimbursed, so that will put them into the same position as everybody else. Councillor Easton mentioned Chepstow hadn't mentioned, but we did receive representation from Chepstow, Chamber of Commerce through Councillor Davy. That's probably it.
Thank you. If I can, sorry, carry on.
One point I did make, and it's an important point to make, as councillor Easton suggested, you could put in a cricket wicket, couldn't you? Eighteen square metres straight out, one metre wide, and we could have entertainment there on Sundays. It's not going to work like that. It's not going to work like that. It has to be in agreement with the Highway Authority. So if the Highway Authority says it's six by three, or it's nine by two, so as we can maintain this, we have to have that authority to do it. If it's just left for the business to take their decision, then it's not a permit scheme. We will work with the businesses to ensure they optimise their opportunity to advertise or sell, but it has to be down to us to agree the permit and the shape of that display.
Right, the last member of this committee to speak is councillor Smith, and then I'll take a question from councillor Davy.
Thank you, Chairman. I apologise for missing your visit to the sites, which you undertook, I think, last week. I never got, I'm sure I didn't get an email for that, but still. I do know the areas that you visited, I know Monmouth pretty well. I want to make it very clear, I applaud initiative and the energy and the drive that people put into their businesses. So I'm not wishing to kill anybody's initiative, we need to work hard and push Monmouthshire forward, but I do sincerely believe there is a need for the management of activities to ensure that we've got a safe highway and that they are appropriate developments. And I do believe very sincerely that the forecast of administering a permit scheme should be borne by those receiving the permits. You cover your insurance liabilities, you do things properly. You receive a permit, not a profit-making one, but it must cover the cost of that permit to the person who is issued with it, because there are other businesses to be considered. And it's not fair that we should be seen to be given financial benefit to some quarters and other businesses round the corner not benefiting. So the cost of administering a permit scheme should be borne by those receiving the permits. There is a necessity for that control. I don't think I've got anything more to say, other than, Chairman, we all know in this room the financial constraints on this council, we need to look at where we're spending every pound. So it's not seeking to penalise anybody, I want to encourage people to do things, to get on, do it, do it properly, ensure that they've got it right, their insurance is right, they're not paying over and above the boards, we're not making a profit, we are purely covering the costs of administering that appropriate and right scheme. That's me.
Thank you very much, councillor Smith. Are there any comments you want to make there, Mr Hawkins? I think councillor Smith's made her point, her position, very clear. I'm very mindful that councillor Powell has got to leave for another appointment, so I would like to bring councillor Powell in next.
I'll be very brief. It's just a couple of ideas. We're talking about places like Church Street. In Abigavenny, we've got a little lane that goes up Lewis Lane, and they have a board at the end of it with all the businesses on the board, and I think if these little streets could have a board at the end, listing all the businesses up there, and from both ends of, like Church Street, I think that would help a lot. And people are worried about, they're worried about the King's Arms taking over the whole of the Post Office Square and Neville Street. I think that we'd have to keep it within opposition of their businesses, sort of straight through, not so they couldn't poach on somebody else's patch then. I think that needs to be looked at. I can understand some small businesses that are down Littleback Alley, obviously they need to have somewhere where they can put their A-boards, but it shouldn't encroach on somebody else's patch, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. Sorry, I've got to go, I've got a few more.
Thank you, councillor Powell. So if I can now take councillor Davy's point.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I wasn't going to say anything, but, hard to believe, but the fact that it came up in conversation that Chepstow had not made any contribution to this debate, one of the reasons was, or is, the fact that the Chamber of Commerce in Chepstow, and I'm on the term councillor, the liaison councillor with the Chamber of Commerce, we got together with Roger and thrashed out a plan of what was possible within the council's remit to do. And that was agreed on, and the businesses in the town agreed on it, it was put before them and they agreed on it. And in all fairness, I have to say, Roger and his officers are implementing that, so we are seeing what... I have to say, Roger and his officers are implementing that. So we are seeing what we jointly agreed happening in real life. So we're pretty pleased with that. The other thing is, as far as Chepstow is concerned, the situation we find ourselves in Chepstow is perhaps not different, but more severe than the other towns, in that we have businesses closing in the town at an alarming rate at the moment. And anybody who knows Chepstow, bang in the centre of the town, there is Herbert Lewis's, who has been there for about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty years. Indeed, the founders of Herbert Lewis founded the Chamber of Commerce in Chepstow, and they've gone through, which is really, really sad thing. They've been very supportive of everything in the town. So we have the repercussions of the changing climate. And I think the other thing one should say, and I guess the guys from Caldicott would say the same, is that with the bridge tolls coming off, everybody said this is good to open up incredible opportunities for businesses in South, in South East Wales. I never did agree with it. I agreed that there might be great opportunities for businesses in South Wales, in industry, if you like, if you want to put it within that bracket. But in retail, it is a huge challenge, because now you can pop across to the Mall, and you've got this huge Mall within ten minutes. You know, it's effectively even closer than Newport's pity. And so that is really big. And that is only going to get worse for Chepstow, and I suspected it would spread, when the toll comes off completely. So there will be no, there will be no cost to go into somewhere that is hugely competitive, and people will take their shopping trip as being something of a treat to go out and have a meal, and that sort of thing. And it leaves, it leaves Chepstow in a particularly vulnerable position with the huge challenge.
Thank you very much, councillor Dowie. You've raised some very important points there. Did you want to come back on any of those at all, Mr Hawkins? And we are very aware, as we were last September, about the pressures on local businesses, and how, you know, their profits are being eroded. So if I could now ask councillor Grocott to speak.
Thank you, chair, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at this committee, as I'm not a member of it. I am a member in Abigavenny, and as one of the towns within Monmouthshire, I sometimes get slightly fed up of the mantra, almost, of Monmouthshire is a rural county. Well, those of us who represent the townships are looking all the time to support and develop the prosperity and wealth of those communities. And in Abigavenny, for many years now, I've lived in the town for over thirty years, you can tell that by my broad Abigavenny accent, we've taken knock after knock. And I just listed some of the things that have gone in recent years. The cattle market was derelict for several years in the town centre. That, at one time, was a tremendous draw to the town. We lost the National Park Information Centre down at the coach and bus station. The youth hostel in Penny Pound was closed. The Hill Residential Centre went, and the cinema went. And I think that was reflected in the fact that, right within the town centre, in recent years, at least three pubs had closed. We are now in a position where this council has invested very, very heavily in pedestrianising the centre of Abigavenny, and transforming the experience of people who visit the town. And so after years of slow decline, I can now look at things like the first arts festival this year, which used St John's Square to tremendous effect. The annual food festival, which really puts the town on a map nationally. And certainly last year, when the Isteasvad came to town, it was a really fantastic experience. And to see the vibrancy of St John's Square in particular, really made me, as a local county councillor, feel very proud that this was my town. And I think that it is incumbent on this county council to do all it can to promote tourism and the wealth of towns like Abigavenny. I know it best, but I'm sure it's true of other communities around the county as well. And certainly, I think that where we are now, in terms of the recommendations in this report, I would certainly endorse them. And I'm glad to see that there is now, it's proposed that there is not a limit to the size of seating. I think the point has been made that each community is different. But just to see the vibrancy that can now be created in the middle of Abigavenny, where for years, that was a dead square. And I think that if we want to make the most of that, then to say it's bound by the same rules as a little tiny side street with a pavement one metre wide, makes no sense at all. I would commend the way in which this revised policy has been put forward. I think it will help those people who make their living in Abigavenny. But more important, from my perspective, as a resident of the town, it will make it a superb place to live. And I commend the recommendations to your committee, and I hope they will support them.
Thank you very much, councillor Grocott. And if I can now ask councillor, is there anything you'd like to say, Mr Hawkins? No? And if I could ask councillor Thomas to address the committee?
Thanks, madam chair, and thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm not a member of this committee. Like councillor Grocott, I've lived in Abigavenny for thirty-five years. I taught in the town for twelve years, and it's been a bit of a rollercoaster in terms of success. I fully support the business community in Abigavenny. I've been very much in touch with them as this campaign has developed. And I've got to say that I was totally shocked that the cabinet chose to ignore the recommendations of this committee. A colleague in the back here made the very eloquent point about local democracy and listening to people. In my mind, scrutiny committees are the ones who are right on the ground and who know what is going on. I know that members of the cabinet are also county councillors, but they tend to have possibly a more strategic view. But I am surprised that the cabinet totally ignored that recommendation. And obviously, it only came about, the changes in terms of charges, for example, only came about because of campaigns such as Mr Philip Bowyer raised with the petition, and the strength of feeling within the business community in Abigavenny. They have been through a very difficult time. As Lucy Howell said, most of them are independent, and that is why, particularly in Abigavenny and in other towns, that is why people come. They can go to Tesco's in, you know, anywhere. And I was in Hungary the other day, there's a Tesco's there. But there isn't, there aren't niche shops that perhaps I would want to go to. In my mind, listening to what's gone on this morning, there has to be a policy. There can't be a free-for-all. It can't come down to common sense. And I'm very much in touch with disability groups in Abigavenny. And obviously, they have issues if there is too much street furniture, or A boards are placed in unsuitable places. And what is suitable to me might not be suitable to a visually impaired member of the public. So there needs to be regulation. There can't be a free-for-all. And I know somebody said this morning, there hasn't been an accident so far, but you can't take that in law. There might be an accident today, there might be an accident tomorrow, and there must be a clear line of accountability. I think in terms of the size of the permit system, and the eighteen square metres has been laid out this morning, there has to be some sort of criteria for deciding what businesses can put out. And I think if there is a need, as perhaps St John's Square and the King's Arms is a prime example, if a certain business wants a larger space, then there has to be a regulated way of dealing with that. And it is the common sense, not just of the person. And let's be honest, if I was a trader in Abigavenny, I would want thirty-six square metres possibly. But there has to be some regulation from the authority, and that's why we pay our council taxes, so that there is some regulation. It's not a free-for-all for that space. And again, I think local members need to be, to a certain degree, involved in that. There has to be a dialogue. And I think, going back to my original point, in terms of democracy, I think MCC now do need to start looking again at ways of engaging with the public, because those are the people who actually pay the council taxes, and want to have their views clearly represented. And they haven't been represented on this occasion.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Some very valid points made there. Did you want to respond, Roger? So if I can now ask councillor Woodhouse to speak?
Thank you, madam chair, and for allowing us to speak this morning, as pointed out by several of us who are not members of this committee. Can I just mention something? We do have a tourist information centre in Abigavenny. I know councillor Grocott referred to the one moving out from the vest station. Yeah, it's run by the National Park in conjunction with the town council, Monmouthshire. But we do, I don't want people to think we haven't got one. I was very pleased to see this policy about street furniture being considered for review. When difficulties about this policy were brought to my attention by local businessmen, in particular regarding the maximum size, I immediately contacted head of operations and the cabinet member, and asked that we need to be more flexible with regard to this policy. I thanked them for their cooperation and understanding, because I did suggest that we could look at the maximum size and some sort of flexibility be put forward. In my opinion, it would be very unfair to take away furniture that has been in situ for many years because of this maximum size included in this policy. And allowances should be made for that. We do need to support our businesses. They need our help and support. Monmouthshire is very much a tourist destination, and all the towns, you know, need our support. And it's been very helpful to hear firsthand from members of the public today, and at the open meetings that we've had previously. I would like to, I could repeat a lot of what's been said this morning, but I think the message has come over loud and clear, that we do need the policy, we need to make our streets safe, that where it's adequate square, the space, and safety is taken into consideration, that this eighteen square metres should be more flexible. I agree with the recommendations, and I would like to ask members of this committee and cabinet members to please accept the recommendations contained in this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Woodhouse. And I know you've worked very closely with businesses, and you, in fact, did get back to me and alerted me to this particular problem at a very early stage. So I thank you for that. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, madam chair. Like a few of the previous speakers, members, I'm observing as well. My concern is Caldicott. Caldicott is different to all the other towns. And I know councillor Easton have mentioned it, and touched on it, and took some of the thunder. But I'm concerned about the monies which have been paid. I understand three, only three of the businesses have paid. But what about the groups working down in Caldicott? They've had to pork out money. They're not getting money from anywhere else. They're doing it free of charge. Their labour is tremendous. Their involvement in trying to get Caldicott up and respectable to try and encourage businesses to come into Caldicott is just tremendous for them. But they have been forced to pay money for putting planters out. Now, I know it's been said earlier on, we'll talk about planters outside this committee, but I think it should be known that they have been forced to pay this money before they could go ahead and put these planters. Fortunately, the planters was done on Saturday. So I want to know where we stand on that. The other thing, it's a question, really, madam chair, is, I'm the chair of the events committee down in Caldicott, and we hold events in Caldicott Centre. Is this going to occur to the events that go on in the town centre, or is it going to be separate? Thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions. And I would just like to comment, first of all, as a community councillor, that I think that community and town councils, obviously, certainly where I'm a town, a community councillor, there is an opportunity to support businesses. And, you know, we have looked at ways of doing that where I'm a councillor. So I think it's, it can't just fall down onto the county council to, you know, look at ways of improving the local area. The town council and community councils must be involved too. But, Mr Hawkins, if you'd like to come back on those points?
Thank you, madam chairman. In relation to section fifty and Caldicott, I will pick up with members after. I haven't got enough information about it. I have had an email about it, but I need to look at that in some further detail before picking up on that one specifically. In relation to whether this would impact upon events, no, this is about day-to-day trading and advertising opportunities. It's not intended to impact upon an individual one-off event.
Councillor, thank you. Councillor Easton?
Yeah, thank you once again, madam chair. Section fifty, I've got it in front of me. And we will discuss it later, but I'd like it publicly noted, I'm making this comment. Guide us notes and conditions. Any person other than a statutory undertaker wishes to place or retain a private apparatus in the street and then after inspect, maintain, adjust, repair, alter, or renew, must be in position of a street works licence, section fifty. The term apparatus includes drains, cables, ducts, sewer pipes, and gas pipes, then et cetera. So et cetera has now been to include planters. Yes, we need to discuss this outside this meeting. I don't, I believe this is a backdoor way of ensuring that people pay some money, because the licence usually pays up to four hundred and fifteen pounds, made of a hundred and thirty-two pounds administration fee, eighty-two pound fifty capitalised fee, and two hundred pound inspection fee. We're not digging holes in the road. We're not laying cables. We're not putting drains in. We need to talk about this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, did you want to come back at all on that reference note?
I'll pick up with the members.
So are there any other contributions from members? What I would like to do now is just to sum up the comments, the very valuable comments made by the members of the business community and the public at the beginning of the meeting. And then I'll invite them to make any further comments they'd like to make. So the King's Arms in Abigavenny, Mr Bowyer, the main points that he made is, he would welcome the charge removal, but concerns on the document. St John's Square is sizable. He wants to see the social scene should continue. He felt there hadn't been many complaints, there was ample room for disabled, no traffic incidents. It's a shared space, but other means to address traffic concerns. It's not broken, so why don't try to mend it? They want people to keep the space and not have to apply for more unless they want more. Let people keep what they have. Mr Farnsworth, cannot understand the rationale to penalise traders, need to become a creator of places, have a vision. Second lesson is communication. The council needs to rethink its relationship with the community participation. Please stop producing hundreds of pages of policy documents that people don't understand. And how do we even find out about that which you are discussing? Anthea Dewhurst, historical law, going back to, I think, fourteen ninety, you said? Yes. Problems identical and unresolved. Each town is different, and I think that's been made, point's been made by a number of people. There is room if people comply with the rules for disability scooters, but accidents do happen in Monmouth, with partially sighted people with random A boards. But the people who comply are not causing the problem. Can we improve rather than become rigid in the place of challenge? When the measurements are agreed, could this be self-managing, so the council has a reduced burden? A team of volunteers with a visually impaired rep, town council rep from Monmouth? Church Street could be full of Church Street could be full of character with hanging signs and other ideas that you've got. Lucy Howell from the Evenny Business Community, this affects a considerable number of businesses in Abregavenny who are facing a battle, and the introduction of the policy is another knock. The festivals allow independents to trade without adhering to policy. We understand the legal obligation for MCC and we accept some form of licence, but there's no reason the council cannot work with the community. We feel that we managed before the introduction of the policy. We believe people should have to apply for a licence and conform with points A to G on the policy regarding health and safety, but we do not agree with the charge. We believe businesses should need to apply for 18 square metres or above and be subject to a risk assessment. And Mr Powell from Grofield made some important points concerning the disability club in Abregavenny, and he had actually been in touch with them regarding any issues, and they had only highlighted one issue. So before I ask councillor Jones, the portfolio holder, to sum up, would anybody from the businesses or the public like to make any further comments? Mr Boyer.
I will be very brief, but it was just to say to those who seem to think the King's Arms wants to expand all over Abregavenny, it doesn't. They're very happy where they are. All they want to do is keep the tables that are there in front of their hotel in St John's Square, and I think people would be very happy if that was the outcome of all this.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure that you are right. Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Jane McFarlane. I just want to say that as a member of the public who uses Monmouth, Abregavenny less so, but I do use both, and I did write to you, and I'm sure you've received that, but I just wanted to say on that, so it was a matter of the record, that as a user, I do endorse everything that's been said today about how important it is that we keep the streets vibrant and interesting for people to use. I've used these shops for more than 30 years, and it would be a disaster for the town and the county if people like me and users no longer felt any interest in going, because as everybody said, there are lots of other opportunities to shop these days. And I just wanted to sort of put on the record that I had written, and the points I made were very much agreed with Mr Enworth and Mr Boyer. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Lucy, if you'd like to come back.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, there seems to be a lot of concentration on the policing of the licence. We seem to spend our lives looking at the minority who contradict rules and regulations. And actually, the majority of us are honest people and will follow rules and regulations. It's a bit like parking in Abregavenny at the moment. It's a free-for-all because there is no policing. Policing doesn't need to be done on a regular basis. If it's done on an ad hoc basis, it will eliminate the offenders. So I think it's too much concentration. With regards to costs and charges, it will have an impact on our retailers. And £60, which was the proposed fee for an A-board at one point, is a lot of money to a retailer who's paying themselves pennies at the moment. And we contribute a lot through our rates, and we get very little back for it. And we accept that, and we're quite silent about that. But we do pay a lot into the community that other parts of the community benefit from. And as I say, we accept that, but a charge is going to be a lot for all of us. And I ask that you would give that quite a big consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr Powell, would you like to speak?
Yeah, just one comment. It frustrates me on a Tuesday to walk down to the local butcher's where we buy all our produce, that Red Square now is being used by the market, and there's 18 square metres that Roger's been on about. I worked out last week that the fruit and veg stall on Red Square was at least 27 square metres. Now, partially disabled or partially sighted people are walking past there six days a week. Next, on that one day, we've now got a stall. It does frustrate the business people to see that these things come and go, and yet we're asked to adhere to certain rules. I'm just wondering whether Roger's got any sort of views on that.
Thank you very much for that question. That's a very valuable point. Would you like to come back on the situation with the market and the controls around that?
I can't tell you the detail on how market traders are managed within the town, but there is, I'm sure there's a policy to manage. And I suspect actually there's a rate of fees which go with it as well. I can only provide written feedback to members on the detail of how market traders are managed within our towns. I'll say our towns, like Abregavenny is famous for its market, really, and quite frankly, that was one of the draws on Tuesdays. But I'll have to provide you with a written note back on quite how that works in practice.
Thank you. Are there anybody else that would like to make any other points? So I would now like to ask councillor Jones to give his contribution as the portfolio holder.
Just to say, where shall I start? First of all, I think I've been an Abregavenny boy for most of my life. I live outside the town, but I've been visiting there for at least the last 70 years. So I've got fairly used to the place, and I value it very much. It is, if you like, my town. We've had a useful debate here today. I think we will all take on board the lessons, I will put it no higher than that. And I've been with Roger to hear from you in the town hall in Abregavenny, and he's also had some debates with people in the street in Abregavenny as well, which he's filled me in on. So all I want to say really is that this will now go via this committee, back to Cabinet again, and I think you would leave it to us to make a sensible decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think we will move to the recommendations now, and I think we'll take them one at a time. Councillor Easton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Before we move to the recommendations, could I suggest we have a recommendation 2.6, that there's a fixed charge for permit and the permits for all time, and that adequate insurance is in place? There's nothing in there about the recommendation on that. Would that be valid?
Roger, would you like to come back on that point? I mean, I think the whole... I think there are a couple of people here that have indicated, you were one of them, councillor Easton, that you wanted a charge for a permit. I think that is covered by 2.1, so really, there is no charge. The recommendation is that this committee recommends to Cabinet that charges for permits for displays, tables be withdrawn, but the charges arising from non-compliance with the permit scheme as detailed within the existing policy remain. I know that the composition of this committee has changed over the last year, so I think we did recommend strongly to Cabinet last September that there were no charges. After that, charges were brought in at 50%, and the A-boards were not charged for. But I think we need to take that recommendation first of all. So can I ask...
So Chair, though, the indication from the officers this morning, there might be a charge for permits. That's what I understood. If that's the case, move it, that's fine.
No, that is not the...
No, 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 I'm on about what the officers said.
Mr Hoggins.
My reference to charges, which may cause some confusion, Madam Chairman, was charging for non-compliance. In the event that somebody fails to comply with their permit, after several warnings, we will take away whatever the offending apparatus is, and we will charge them for having done so. But other than that, Madam Chairman, the recommendation is that there is no charge for any business, be it A-board display, there's no charge for a permit.
And I think it is made very clear in the report, in fairness, that there is no charges. So first of all, can I have a show of hands? Yeah, oh, sorry, councillor...
I realise I'm speaking on my own, but I don't know if I'm moving an amendment or whatever, but I do consider that the cost of administering a permit scheme should be borne by those receiving permits.
So really, that is about charging, so I think obviously you need to vote appropriately.
It is a charge. Yes, it is not. I've never done these sort of things about. It is not a profit-making thing, it is the administrative cost we have to face as a council to administer whatever scheme. There is going to be a considerable cost in office a time. And if we actually looked at the cost of this meeting this morning, it would be quite interesting. So I am proposing that the cost of administering the scheme should be covered by the permit receivers.
If I can just point out, thank you for that comment, councillor Smith, but the scheme and the administration cost was all that was involved last time. It wasn't going to be a profit-making thing. So really, if you feel strongly about that, that is covered under 2.1. Are you suggesting that you want to make an amendment? Councillor Harris.
Chair, can you just confirm that the overall price, if the scheme was charged for, is about £5,000?
I think the actual figure given was £2,700 in the report. Is that not correct, Mr Hoggins? And we are suggesting that that charge will be borne by the council, as we did last September. And obviously councillor Smith's position is slightly different. She wants the administration of this to be covered, which is in effect the charge, because it was a non-profit-making charge when those figures were put forward over a year ago. That's correct, is it, Roger?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. When the report went to Cabinet in January 2018, it fed back on strong communities' recommendation that no charges should be included, but it also made reference to the budget implications of not applying a charge. In the original report, we would generate an income of £5,200, our estimate, for applying charges for displays, A-boards and the like. In January, Cabinet decided that there would be no charges for A-boards, but they would also have the proposed charge put forward by officers, and that's what they did. And that would raise our estimate income to the authority of around £2,600. If members are now recommending that that charge be dropped, then the impact of that change is to reduce the income to the authority by an estimated £2,600. The report suggests, in event of that taking place, then that £2,600 will have to be found from within the highways budget overall. So that's how we will cover off that cost. If I could just pick up on councillor Smith's, I'm not sure if it's coming forward as a recommendation or an amendment, but it would seem to me that councillor Smith, and please correct me where I'm wrong, is suggesting that there should be a charge for applying a permit, whereas the recommendation is that there isn't a charge for applying...
Yeah, if I can just come in here, because the cabinet member has said that the charges are to be dropped. I think that the members of the public here, we are talking about £2,600, and I know we need to look at every penny, but I think we have to vote as per the recommendation. And that this committee recommends to Cabinet that charges for permits for displays, tables, chairs be withdrawn, but the charges arising, as I said before, from non-compliance from the permit scheme as detailed within the existing policy remain. Are you happy that we have a vote on that, councillor Smith?
Yes, fine.
Okay, so can we...
I'm alone in the minority.
All in favour of recommendation number one, please show. Committee members only. Can you put your hands up really clearly so that we can... Councillor Jones, are you showing your hand? Okay, have you got that? And all those against? And I would like to vote, and I would like to vote with the recommendation. So the result there is five against one, so that is carried.
Can I say, Chairman, I do support and applaud every initiative to promote Monmouthshire that anybody can, but always remembering that bottom line for the monies.
Thank you, councillor Smith. If we can now move to recommendation number 2.2, that this committee recommends to Cabinet that additional criteria be added to the existing policy to allow businesses to occupy an area greater than 18 square metres, where this can be achieved without compromising safety or causing an unacceptable obstruction in the highway. Can all those in favour please show? Only committee members? Any against? So that's unanimous. So that's carried. 2.3, that permits for... Sorry?
May I interject, Madam Chairman? 2.3 falls away now, given your decision in 2.1. 2.3 would only have applied should you have decided to continue to apply charges. In other words, we had to have a basis upon which to charge. You've decided against charging, so 2.3 actually falls away.
Thank you very much for that. So we'll move on to 2.4, that any request from a business to occupy an area greater than 18 square metres be approved by the county highways manager or head of service in consultation with a local member and Cabinet member for operations. All those in favour? And that's...
Just come in. Where it says local member, for example in Abregavenny, there are two local members that interact with the... Could it be local members where appropriate?
Yes, very good point, and we'll amend that to be local members. Are you happy with that, Mr Hoggins?
Sorry, Madam Chairman, just for clarification, because I wouldn't want to get this wrong. When you talk of local members in Abregavenny, I don't believe, let's take St John's Square, shall we, just for example, that that's a joint ward? Is that a joint ward?
There's only one shared ward, and that's mine, which is Gilwyn, Clidagh and Clonathely Hill. All the other wards have single members.
So is the rec...
Two members look after opposite sides of the streets where this could have happened.
Yes.
Not just St John's Square, probably.
It's only sensible.
I think in this case, common sense will prevail, and obviously, where two members share a street, then the council, I would consult both of those members. Councillor Thomas?
I think in Abregavenny, if you take, for example, Frogmore Street, councillor Sheila Woodhouse is responsible for one, is the member for one side, I'm the member for the other side. So depending on which side of the street the issue arises, then obviously that member would be involved. I think member is probably okay. And St John's is clearly councillor Woodhouse's ward, so there's no conflict there.
Thank you very much. I think we're all getting a bit pedantic here, so if we can stick with the recommendation. And can all those in favour please show on 2.4? So that's carried, thank you. And 2.5, that this committee recommends to Cabinet that the permit scheme for individual premises as described within the existing policy remain in place, the withdrawal of the scheme leaving businesses with no authority to place any item in the public highway, and leaving the authority with no agreement upon which to monitor compliance. All those in favour? So that is carried as well. So I think that it does state quite clearly that we will make these recommendations to Cabinet, but I... Cabinet, but I think this is something that we need to revisit. The situation in the high streets and for our businesses is rapidly changing. I was absolutely horrified when I heard how much profit Amazon made last weekend and the impact in the States, where now 50% of things are now bought from that particular company. And so I feel that this is perhaps a policy that will change in the future, we have to make sure that we adapt and that we listen to our business community, and that also the Cabinet listens to this scrutiny committee, because we are, you know, the forum in which we listen to you and recommend exactly what we should be doing going forward. We are very sensitive, we want to see vibrant, healthy high streets and communities, and that is, you know, we are fully behind you, and I hope that any of you can come and speak to me at any time, I'd be very happy to set up a meeting with you, and I think we need to keep a close eye on this and make sure that we have got a vision, as Mr Farnsworth said, and that we look to the future and ensure that our communities continue to thrive. But thank you all very much indeed for your contributions, it's greatly appreciated, and I will now close the meeting. Thank you.